Festerson.
Here.
Hardy.
Here.
Melton.
Here.
Pauls.
Here.
Palermo.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here.
And greatest absence.
Please rise for the pledge allegiance and remain standing for the invocation by council member Pauls.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Several weeks ago, we should have wished somebody a happy birthday, and we didn't. So what I'm going to do is, I know every one of you have a birthday, so I'm going to wish you all a happy birthday, and that will let, you'll see my message when I talk a little later on. So, happy birthday to you all, same to you guys up here. In fact, you did have one not too long ago, didn't you? March. Okay, okay. Thank you.
They have gifts in the mail.
An affidavit of publication is on file for a pre-council and city council meeting. It is a copy of the meeting act. It's posted in White Knight.
I'm Jim Calhoun.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. The council thanks you for joining us today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we ask you to please turn off or silence your phones at this time. And before we begin, I want to let the presenters and council members know that before our meeting today, some of our technological items broke down. So some council members will have to share microphones. We don't have a light system to queue in requests to talk. And given how many things I have to worry about doing over here, what I'm going to do, if it's okay with council, I'll just start on my left, and we'll work our way around for whoever wants to talk on each item, if you want to engage. And then, for presenters today, oh, and also council members, the row behind us for the administration, they don't have microphones, so if you have questions for them, they're going to have to come out to use this mic. And for those of you who may have wanted to present something visually, the camera's down, so you can't do that either. But, we're just going to have to keep in mind the full color of the various things we're talking about, including the fireworks, when we get to that item. Madam Clerk.
Item six to nine relate to the same project and can be considered together for the Glota Edition located southeast of Blair High Road and McKinley Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item six in ordinance to rezone this property from AG District to GI District. Item seven in ordinance to mend the boundaries of the IG overlay district to incorporate this property into that district. Item eight, a resolution to approve the final plat for Glota Edition. Item nine, a resolution to approve the Glota Edition subdivision agreement.
The public hearings on items six through nine begin at this time. Are there any proponents? Opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Approve.
Second.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Hardy.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items six through nine are approved six to zero. Items ten to thirteen relate to the same project and can be considered together for Majestic Point located southwest of 168th and State Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item ten in ordinance to rezone this property from AG District to DR District and DR District to DR District. Item eleven in ordinance to rezone this property from AG District and DR District to our fourth district. Item twelve, a resolution to approve the final plat for Majestic Point. Item thirteen, a resolution to approve Majestic Point subdivision.
The public hearings on items ten through thirteen begin at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 1144 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the developer and the development. This is the third phase of Majestic Point. It's an additional 57 single-family lots on the southwest corner of 168th and State. I would show you the final plat, but I can't.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents wishing to be heard? Any opponents? Council members?
Move the approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Hardy.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items ten to thirteen are approved six to zero. Items fourteen seventeen relate to the same project and can be considered together for the Preserve located southwest of Turner and 22nd F Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item fourteen in ordinance to rezone this property from AG District to DR District. Item fifteen, a resolution to approve the revised preliminary plat for the Preserve. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval and the request for waivers, with the exception of a denial of section 53-910 regarding street lights. Item sixteen, a resolution to approve the final plat for the Preserve. Item seventeen, a resolution to approve the Preserve subdivision agreement.
The public hearings on items fourteen through seventeen begin at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, Mr. President, council members. Jim Bouger, 10250 Regency Circle, here on behalf of the developer. This is a 270-acre, eight-acreage development located southwest of 222nd and Skyline Drive. And we're here on final plat today, and we'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them today. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Hardy.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items fourteen through seventeen are approved six to zero. Items eighteen and nineteen relate to the same project and can be considered together. Item eighteen in ordinance to mend the boundaries of the SCC overlay district to incorporate into that district, the property located at 5545 Center Street. Item nineteen, a resolution to approve especially use permit applications submitted by Carolina Padilla to allow personal improvement services in the GI District for the property located at 5545 Center Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearings on items number eighteen and nineteen begin at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes. Good afternoon. Amy Lawrenson, 1700 Barnum Street, Suite 1500. Here on behalf of the applicant this afternoon. This will be the new home of the Intercultural Senior Centers' prime location. We are here today with the OR group, should you have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Second. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Hardy.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items eighteen and nineteen are approved six to zero. Item twenty, an application to consider a class C liquor license for Addy Sports Grill Maple Inc., doing business as Addy Sports Grill &amp; Bar located at 14615 West Maple Road, Suites 100 and 102.
The public hearing on item number twenty begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Tim Addison here to represent Addy Sports Bar. Here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Move the approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Hardy.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty five approved six to zero. Item twenty one, an application to consider a class C liquor license for Lotus Market LLC, doing business as Bill's Barbecue and Convenience Store located at 4414 North 24th Street.
The public hearing on item number twenty one begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes. Yeah, I'll be the owner of the Lotus Market LLC. Any questions, I'm here to answer.
And your address?
4414 North 24th Street.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Hardy.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty one is approved six to zero. Item twenty two, an application to consider a class C liquor license for the Session Room Omaha LLC, doing business as the Session Room located at 1415 Coming Street. A is communication from Union to City.
Public hearing on item number twenty two begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue. Here today on behalf of the applicant. As you may know, this current business, the Session Room, was located off of Mike Fahey, but they're giving way to Keywood Development, which is very exciting for the neighborhood, and they're moving to 1415 Coming Street. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Hardy.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty two is approved six to zero. Item twenty three, an application to consider a class C liquor license for Shahi Omaha LLC, doing business as Shahi located at 1015 Barnum Street.
Public hearing on item number twenty three begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, members of the council, Mike Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue. Here with Mr. Peraminder Singh. This is a replacement license going in at O's Dining. So it would be Indian cuisine. I'm here for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Do you want to tell us a little bit about what you plan to do, a little chance to make a pitch for your new business?
Good afternoon, my name is Peraminder Singh for Shahi Omaha LLC, 1015 Farnham. And we primarily going to serve the Indian food.
That was a guess, but I mean, just, anything special or unique you want to tell everyone about?
Nothing I'd say.
When are you going to open?
We're planning to August 5th. Let's see.
Oh, great. Welcome to the downtown.
Yeah, I really appreciate it.
Move the approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Hardy.
Yes.
Lawrenson.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty three is approved six to zero. Item twenty four, an application to consider a class K liquor license for Dela Costa LLC, doing business as Dela Costa located at 220 South 31st Street, Suite 3103, with a waiver of city council.
The public hearing on item number twenty four begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? I would say, I would be okay with waiving our normal rule that they be here. They were approved for the license, they've had no violations, and this is simply a modification of the existing license.
I'll move the approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Subject to waiver.
Subject to the waiver rule sign.
That's included in the agenda item. Yeah, so no separate was needed, but thanks. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Hardy.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty four is approved six to zero. Item twenty five, an application to consider a class K liquor license for Friends Family LLC, doing business as 5168 Brewing located at 3201 Barnum Street, Suite 6107.
Hello, my name is Chadwick Fisher.
Hold on just a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're excited, but we got to kind of go through our routine here. The public hearing on item number twenty five begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes. My name is Chadwick Fisher, 3201 Farnham Street, Friends and Family LLC, doing business as 5168 Brewing. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, welcome to the council, and thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Move the approval.
Second. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Hardy.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty five is approved six to zero. Item twenty six, an application to consider a class K liquor license for Turner Park Center LLC, doing business as Herb Saint located at 1934 South 67th Street.
The public hearing on item number twenty six begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. It's the same common ownership with item twenty four. Second. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Hardy.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty six is approved six to zero. Item twenty seven, an application to consider in addition to NODO Zesto Operating LLC, doing business as Zesto Blat Veer and Table located at 610 North 12th Street, in addition to their class C KG liquor license for an outdoor area approximately six feet by 35 feet to the east, A is communication from the chief building inspector.
The public hearing on item number twenty seven begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Mike Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue. This is a very narrow strip right outside of the Blat on 12th Street, mostly to have access, a winter time access for upstairs, because then they can come out and go upstairs without going all the way out and use the other. Outdoor one can be dangerous, it's not clean and so on. And then a couple, actually a couple extra tables. This, a repeat, will not be used during the college world series. The city has already talked to us about that, and we said, fine, that's great, we don't want to use it then anymore.
And you understand it's contingent upon permits?
Of course.
Okay, are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Move the approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Hardy.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty seven is approved six to zero. Item twenty eight, an application to consider a special designated liquor license for September Fest Salute to Labor event located at the Century Link Center Omaha, 455 North 10th Street, Lot D, on August 31st, 2018, from 5:00 p.m. to midnight, September 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, from noon to midnight, with music until midnight each night.
The public hearing on item number twenty eight begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Hi, Linda Moran, 6910 Pacific Street, Suite 450.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Move the approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Hardy.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty eight is approved six to zero.
Yeah, for the person who's now here on twenty four and twenty six, you just missed it. But, all good.
Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may question the item placed on the consent agenda to be removed and removed from the consent agenda, shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were requested, otherwise provided by the city council.
The public hearings on agenda items twenty nine through thirty five were held on July 17, 2018.
Move the approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Hardy.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items twenty nine through thirty five are approved six to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items thirty six through fifty are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding any of these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item, number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent. And we removed item forty from the consent for possible conflict. I can't vote on that item. Anyone testifying on any of these items? Proponent or opponent? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Second. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Hardy.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Is there a motion on item forty?
Approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Hardy.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Pass. Yes.
Or Mr. President passes twice due to contract interest. Item forty is approved five to zero. Item fifty one, a resolution to approve the contract with Construct Inc. for OPW 53354 in the amount of $8,186,400 for the city of Omaha, OPD West Precinct.
The public hearing on item number fifty one begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Oh, here we go, proponent. Welcome, chief.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Touch from our chief of police, 505 South 15. I will be quick. Obviously, I'm a proponent. It's been a long time coming for our fifth precinct to provide even coverage to our city. I am here for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Any council members?
Approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Hardy.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item fifty one is approved six to zero. Item fifty two, an ordinance to amend sections 20-230 and 30-261 of the Omaha Municipal Code to shorten the period of time currently allowed for the use of fireworks to June 30th through July 4th, and to shorten the period of time currently allowed for the sale of fireworks to June 29th through July 4th, and to shorten hours allowed for the use of fireworks except for July 4th, A is communication and support, B is communication from the police chief, C is communication from the fire chief.
The public hearing on item number fifty three begins at this time. Are there any, or fifty two, excuse me, are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, councilman.
Welcome, mayor.
Every year, complaints about fireworks increase at a very high rate. Since late June, we have answered more than 1,200 calls, emails on the mayor's hotline alone. That doesn't even consider the complaints directly to you, our police department, or 911, or the social media debate over fireworks. Most people who contact us just want a shorter, more reasonable period of time for the use of fireworks. They implore us to take action with messages like this. This is our home, not a war zone. There is no respect for fellow neighbors. We don't use common sense anymore. We need to stop this madness. And when did Independence Day celebration become a season? I'm asking you to support a change in the current ordinance that will reduce the number of days for the use of fireworks from 10 to five days. It is a responsible compromise that responds to our constituents who are asking us to act on their behalf. It also allows a reasonable six days for nonprofit organizations to sell the fireworks. The daily hours for discharging fireworks would change from the current 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. to a later start time of noon. The exception would be on the 4th of July, when an 8:00 a.m. start time would be permitted. I believe this allows the traditional celebration of Independence Day while addressing citizen concerns about noise, firework injuries, property damage, the impact on pets, and very importantly, the effects on persons with PTSD. The members of my military advisory board feel strongly that this ordinance needs to be changed to protect veterans who suffer, and I agree with them. You will, of course, hear from the organizations who raise money through the sale of legal fireworks. These are good community organizations that provide worthwhile services, but fireworks sales is not a guaranteed source of revenue for these nonprofits. This council approves 50 permits annually, and there is no guarantee that the applicants will be approved year after year. Some nonprofits interviewed on TV media on July 3rd said they make 80% of their profits in the three days surrounding the 4th of July. Fireworks is not just an Omaha issue either. After increases in public complaints this year, the council, Bluff City Council, is also considering further limits on the number of days fireworks can be used. As the largest city in the metropolitan area, we should be the leader, be responsive to our citizens, and set an example to other communities. Citizens are asking us to do something. Amending the ordinance shows that we are listening and acting, and I ask for your support today. I'm also going to give to the clerk for the record a copy of all of the emails that I received over the 4th of July.
Without objection. Without objection, will be received. Thank you, Mayor. Are there any other proponents? And if, just before you start, chief, if you, if there are a number of you who wish to be heard, you can start a line on each side, and then we'll just rotate back and forth. Come on down near the front of the rows. And proponents at this time, those in favor of the ordinance. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, council. As chief of police, I am here to give my support for the proposed ordinance to shorten the timeframe for fireworks. As to the aspect of the sale of fireworks by private vendors, that's out of my purview, and I'm not going to touch upon that. The summer months are especially busy for the Omaha Police Department, especially last year, or this year, I'm sorry. June and early July marked a spike in violence that we had in the city of Omaha and comprised most of our focus. It culminated in a murder in the old market that really had the Omaha Police Department working night and day. During this time period, we received one thousand two hundred and forty-six fireworks complaints, taxing our resources all over the city. I have a packet prepared for the fireworks that's going to show the arrests and locations.
Without objection, will be received.
Of note of the document is the complaints are all over the city. It's a citywide issue. Twenty-four arrests were made in violation of the current fireworks ordinance in two thousand eighteen. In my letter, I wrote thirty-two. That was an error. It is twenty-four. Those are broken down on the back page or second to back page of the packet I'm handing out. One point I do want to make is this. We did not keep track of how many times an officer went by a fireworks call and told the citizen or a group or a party that it's past hours or to cease with the fireworks, and the citizen complied. There is a necessity for us to expediently handle calls, and we do need to be available for higher priority calls. So if that citizen complied directly, didn't have a commercial-grade firework or a second or third time, or there was a huge uproar in the street, we generally, if they put it away, we handled it that way. One argument that I've heard is if we enforce our current ordinance more aggressively, perhaps we wouldn't be in this situation. But there are unintended consequences to that, and I do not believe that premise to be accurate. One, it would take us away from higher priority calls. Two, it would criminalize the society that is otherwise law-abiding citizens. Many of the arrests that we made, they didn't even have any arrest record at all. And as chief, it is generally bad business to criminalize a society and start making arrests of law-abiding citizens just to address one particular issue that I think that can be addressed by shortening an ordinance. Three, we do have to witness the offense. So if there's a crowd of people, we have to actually see who let that off. And oftentimes, we'll have somebody willing to call us but not step forward as a witness. So oftentimes, it's best just handled to have them put it away. So one would have to ask ourselves how much specific and general deterrents would we actually have. Four is most of our complaints are for legal fireworks, believe it or not. It seems like people were just tired of hearing them after ten days. And five, if mandated to blanket the city with enforcement, would be very, very costly. I would not be able to use on-duty officers to do it. We answer nearly a million calls for service a year. I need them available to answer the higher priority calls. We would have to staff this with overtime operation, and the cost would almost rival what it would cost for CWS every year. So in conclusion, it is currently ten days where fireworks can be used. Increase that to twenty days, and OPD's complaints and problems get exasperated. Shorten it to five days, and the problems for the Omaha Police Department get mitigated. I'm going to be around for any questions.
Thank you, chief. Any other proponents wishing to be heard? Mr. Langdon?
Thank you very much. Mark Langdon with the Nebraska Humane Society, eighty-nine twenty-nine Fort Street. I appreciate the chance to talk today about a problem that we certainly have a vested interest in at the Nebraska Humane Society, that being fireworks. Our calls skyrocket, and I don't mean that as a pun, but they literally do, in the time preceding the Fourth of July. Stray animal calls, dogs jumping fences, dogs being lost, dogs coming into the shelter, increased by fifty percent the ten days prior to July 4th than they did the same days in May slash June of this year. So it's definitely a problem that we deal with. We don't just deal with fireworks ramification on the animals, mainly dogs. We deal with the owners having to deal with their pets, who go through a very tough time with mortar shells going off around their house practically, dogs having to be sedated. I mean, it's a real problem. And there are thousands, tens of thousands of dog owners in the Omaha area. We license over a hundred thousand dogs a year, and that's just with a sixty-five percent compliance rate. So that tells you the number of households that have dogs here in the city of Omaha. And we hear from our fair share, just like the email stash that the mayor had. I mean, this is a big topic for people here in the city of Omaha. So we would love to see it drop from ten days to five days. I've talked to several council members, and a number of people have called my office over the past couple of days telling me that why not just ban it altogether? And I truly believe, I've been in law enforcement now for forty years, counting my time with the Omaha Police. I mean, all our bans don't seem to work real well. But if you limit it to a certain number of days, in this case, five, you're going to have a huge number of law-abiding citizens that comply in that five-day period, and it's going to minimize the days surrounding that five-day period. So we stand by the five days. We applaud the mayor for introducing it on behalf of the pet owners from the Nebraska Humane Society, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Mr. Bench, Parks Director.
Brooke Bench, Parks Director. Thank you for hearing me. This has been an issue in the Parks Department for many, many years. We have over two hundred and fifty parks in the city of Omaha. And usually, what you hear in the houses, take that stuff across the street and light it off in the parks. And that's what's been done for many, many years. As we're trying to get parks ready for the Fourth of July holiday, try to make things pretty for all of our parks across the city, our staff is continuously tasked of cleaning up the fireworks that don't get picked up or that are shot off in the parks, which is a lot. Many, many of our parks are tennis courts. All across the city get used for firework stations where a lot of kids go. And usually, not all the time, but a lot of the time, they are left there. And with our, with tasking our staff to pick everything up, clean up all the little bit of papers, all the things that we have, and when you look at across the whole city, but all the park system that we have, it's a lot. So shorting this would definitely help make our parks easier to get beautified for the big holiday. We like to have everything to try to look nice for the Fourth of July, and this would definitely help us out a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bench. Acting Chief McCaw, Omaha Fire.
Good afternoon. Tim McCaw, fifteen sixteen Jackson Street, Assistant Fire Chief. I'm here today to support the amending of the current city ordinance to reduce the period of time allowed for the use, sale, and hours permitted for the usage of fireworks. The Fire Department's two greatest responsibilities are reducing risks in the community, enhancing public safety within our community. Each year, the Omaha Fire Department responds to emergencies that are directly attributed to the usage of fireworks. Annually, crews respond to building, vehicle, natural vegetation, outside rubbish fires, as well as injuries to citizens that are directly related to the usage of fireworks. To illustrate this point, in the past three years, the Omaha Fire Department has responded to twenty-three fires that were directly related to the usage of fireworks, as well as to twelve medical emergencies to citizens injured by fireworks. It is my opinion that the proposed amendments recommended by Mayor Stothart are compromises that allow for the reasonable usage of fireworks during the Fourth of July holiday, while at the same time promote public safety and the reduction of risks within our city. Thank you for your time, and I'll be here to answer any questions.
Thanks. Okay, we'll start over here. Ms. Vowell?
Good afternoon. My name is Lexanne Roach, and I live at four nine six nine Ohio Street. For many years, I lived with a dog that was terrified, and in some degree, she was lucky because I bought her medication. But I saw many dogs that were not that fortunate, and it's abuse to the animals. But more importantly, if our law enforcement is asking us to make this change, out of respect for them and our Fire Department, I believe that we should do that. But finally, I would ask that Omaha not just be a city that says we honor our veterans, but that we be a city that shows that we honor our veterans, and this would be a way for us to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll come over here.
My name is Steve Novatney. I'm retired police, so I'll give you five oh five South Fifteenth Streets address. I'm a member of the mayor's panel on military and also a member of many other military organizations throughout our community. Since nine eleven, tens of thousands of local reserve, National Guard, and people who are active-duty members have been mobilized in support of the war on terrorism. In addition to that, we have to remember that just because you come back doesn't mean that everything is done and over with, that we also need to consider the veterans that have gone through other engagements such as Panama, Grenada, all the way back to World War II. There are still individuals suffering from those situations. It's estimated anywhere between twelve and fifteen percent of individuals who have deployed potentially have PTSD. And we have to remember also that PTSD can be developed through other incidences such as accidents or assaults on top of wartime environments. The mayor's recommendation is not eliminating the sale of fireworks, but reducing the number of days. The Fourth of July is one specific day, but fireworks sales and the ignition of fireworks go on twenty-four hours a day throughout many areas. The, I looked at a newspaper from South Carolina that says many people are injured previous month and a month after the Fourth of July throughout the country. And I'm sure we probably have some similar statistics to that, that injuries do not stop because the Fourth is over. Looking at local newspapers for the past five or six years, it's averaged fifteen injuries that were significant enough for individuals to be taken to a hospital to reach, to receive medical attention by a professional. And if you've got fifteen that go to a hospital, you've probably got many more who don't go. The bottom line is that the proposal will allow fireworks sales to continue in the future, that organizations will be able to make money for their organizations, which are definitely good causes. And we have to remember that other people are affected by what we do and don't do in many other ways, and that's the reason why I was brought here today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come back over to this side.
Good afternoon. I'm Christine Share from five three zero seven North Fifty-Eighth Plaza Circle, Omaha, Nebraska. I moved back from Fort Collins, Colorado, eleven years ago to be with family. I was born and raised here before fireworks were allowed. And when I got back in two thousand and eleven, I find out that you, the big fireworks have begun. I was really disappointed and disheartened. Usually, every Fourth of July, I try to get out of here by about the second or third. I don't even want to spend Fourth of July in Omaha, Nebraska. It is ridiculous. This year, I was able to, I had to stay in order, before I left town, and it was a war zone. And I live in an area of seniors. I'm kind of a senior myself, the younger of the seniors. It was a nightmare. I called night after night after night, and the police had to come out, and I hated to bother them. They have more things to do. I jumped so many times, my heart stopped almost. And I really thought about, you know, our soldiers, and I thought, this is doing this to me. I've never been in a war. But it felt like a war. I felt like I was in Syria or somewhere. So I called many times. Anyway, if I had my way, I'd eliminate them all together. Profit, to me, doesn't mean a lot when people's lives are being frightened and scared. And animals, I've had friends who said their animals were just going crazy. I guess the bottom line is, I'd like to diminish it to one day a year, and I will still try to get out of here for Fourth of July. It was, it was just unbelievable. And I'm sorry I took up so much time on the phone yelling about it, but you must really think about this. You know, I totally support our mayor and all the other folks that have spoken. It is a nightmare, and if you don't do something about it, people are going to have to leave town. It's insane. So that's all I'm saying.
Thank you.
I hope you eliminate it, or at least go back to five days.
Come back to this side.
Good afternoon. My name's Jennifer Salick. I live at six zero two three South one hundred and fifty ninth Circle. This letter serves as my support for Mayor Stothart's proposal to amend fireworks ordinance twenty dash three twenty. Over the last several years, I have watched the fireworks situation in Omaha continue to degrade with an increasing number of people blatantly disregarding the current ordinance with no fear of consequence. Individuals in my neighborhood set off fireworks well beyond the eleven PM deadline, sometimes until one AM on a weeknight, when most people, including myself, have to get up early, that is four thirty, to go to work. They also shoot fireworks up to four days beyond the July Fourth deadline set in the ordinance. So many times, I wanted to call the police department but was hesitant because I was sure they were responding to other calls throughout the city. I also didn't want to call nine-one-one with a non-emergency and tie up the line for real emergencies, like baby angel, the newborn baby who died because her mom couldn't get through to emergency personnel on July fifth. The July Fourth holiday used to be about celebrating our independence. However, it's become an all-out assault on our community. The constant barrage of explosions for two weeks rattles my windows, disturbs my sleep, and terrifies my dogs, who refuse to go outside to relieve themselves. Every time I'm startled by another mortar-like firework being discharged, I think about the Iraq and Afghanistan veterans, who I personally know, who suffer from PTSD and only can imagine what they are experiencing. While I wish that the mayor's proposal to amend the ordinance included shortening the time fireworks can be discharged to ten PM, I am supportive of anything that will help the current situation. I work with active-duty military, and they have expressed that they have been stationed in a lot of different cities and have never seen anything as bad as Omaha with regard to fireworks. I am supportive of people being able to have fun with fireworks, but it has gotten absolutely out of control, and I ask the Omaha City Council to please approve Mayor Stothart's proposal to amend the fireworks ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll come back over to this side.
George Merrithew, five oh five South Fifteenth Street, Omaha, Nebraska. And I would just like to add to Steve Novatney. Steve's a retired colonel that I had the pleasure of serving with in the Army Reserves. I am a lieutenant colonel in the Army Reserves, currently still serving thirty-four years plus. When this proposal was brought to us, I serve on the mayor's advisory committee for military affairs and issues, and this was the first big thing that we took a bite out of. And we looked at it from the veterans. Unlike Steve, I'm not a combat veteran, but I'm a judge advocate, and I serve and assist people with their issues. And those issues may be legal, or it may be me trying to help them get to the right resources that the military and the Veterans Administration provides. And I have, on countless occasions, had to advise people on where to go for their PTSD. While I haven't been to a combat zone, I've been to a lot of training with a lot of live fire, a lot of loud noises. Woke up in the morning in Colorado with one-five-five howitzers shooting over the top of my tent. It's very loud, and when you hear some of these artillery shells, it'll take you back there in an instant. And for me, most of those experiences were decent. They were training. Nobody was getting hurt. Nobody was dying. But for those veterans who've been to these combat zones that have had to see that, that instantaneous pullback to that moment in time is horrendous. And I see myself doing it and hearing it as a law enforcement officer, as a military-trained person. When I hear those noises, they do bring you right back there. They do recreate that instant in time wherever you heard it. For me, again, most of those were pleasant experiences. They were training experiences. For a lot of our veterans, they're not. They're very unpleasant experiences, where they've lost loved ones, where they've lost people that they know, where they themselves have been injured. So it's a horrible flashback for them. So when this was brought to us, we wholeheartedly endorsed it. We looked at it as a way to honor our veterans and honor the people who've served this country and this city with their service and their time. Subject to any questions? That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll come back over here.
Rebecca Pukufka, one-two-three zero one Selden Drive. As I contacted my councilman, Mr. Brinker Harding, I'm in support of Mayor Stothart's proposal for reduced time allowed for fireworks use. I've lived in several cities, and I've never lived in a place like Omaha with such lack of rules on fireworks purchasing and usage. I was stunned my first Fourth of July here six years ago, where I witnessed types of fireworks you typically have to pay to see that would be put on by licensed professionals and for two weeks. Though that time is often illegally extended by city members taking advantage of the ordinance, the point of the Omaha Police Department emergency response personnel cannot attend to all the complaints, nor can they attend to true emergencies. Over four hundred complaints were received in approximately three hours on July fifth. The amount of complaints recorded are the only ones that were patched through and do not account attempts from people such as myself. I tried to contact the Omaha Police Department on July fifth around ten PM and received no response, so I dialed nine-one-one, which was the recommendation of the Omaha Police Department, according to the information on their Twitter page, to which I received a busy signal. I cannot imagine if I had a true emergency, what I would have done in a situation with emergency response personnel unreachable. This poses a real threat to community safety. As an Army veteran who's served fifteen months in a combat zone in Iraq, I would completely support and advocate for the entire ban of fireworks. I find myself increasing my anxiety medications every Fourth of July, and I would consider my response to the sounds that mimic rocket attacks and IEDs to be tame compared to what some veterans have to go through. And this isn't one night a year that has to be dealt with. This has become nearly an entire month of fireworks activity surrounding the Fourth of July, to include several days around New Year's. In addition, my pets are terrified. I have to dose my dog with melatonin and calming medication. He refuses to go to the bathroom outside if he hears fireworks. My husband and I get no sleep. In addition to the noise created and sustained until two or three AM, the dog keeps us awake as he paces and barks all night. The amount of trash and litter that occurs following fireworks use is another thing to consider. Our streets and yards are littered with trash. The amount of injuries inflicted on fireworks users and bystanders, nuisance created from people who are oftentimes inebriated utilizing fireworks is another point of consideration. What about the potential hazards and likelihood of personal property catching on fire? Who is responsible to pay for damages to my personal property or the city's property? Please vote in favor of Mayor Stothart's proposal and consider the population of veterans and military members in this community. Consider pet owners. Consider emergency response personnel, and how much taxpayer money is devoted to responding to senseless nuisance complaints, as well as the ability to respond to true emergencies. Consider property damage and liability. Above all, consider community safety and that multiple viewpoints on this issue should ultimately come down to the greater good. Thank you.
Thank you. Come back over to this side. Are you just standing? Okay. We'll stay over here. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Rachel Grace, six forty South Nineteenth Street. I just want to say, in addition to having a dog that I have to send out of town because he becomes so ill during this time, that's one thing I think we've heard echoed, I just want to say I think it's irresponsible to not have the proper resources in place to manage this kind of liability, irresponsible as a city. I think many, many people here do not have any idea that they're breaking the law when they light off fireworks outside of the designated times, and if they do, there's no association with the consequences that there are for breaking that law. I believe that we need money behind the awareness of these parameters. I think we need PSAs on safe fireworks handling, because I think it's unacceptable that people are still losing fingers every year, and I don't think they're handling them properly. And I think PSAs on the effect these fireworks have on our neighbors, people I don't think realize the depth of this problem, and that's why they do it anyway. So I think the money, perhaps as a tax, behind this would be helpful. And I think we need a large crew of officers in the street citing people as a deterrent. Thank you for considering this change.
Thank you. Next proponent. We're still, we're going to stay over here.
Good afternoon. Lori Forl, nineteen twenty-nine South Forty-seventh Street, Omaha, six eight one oh six. I'm here to support Mayor Stothart's proposal. I don't have PTSD or asthma. I don't have young children in the house, and I don't have to get up early the next morning. I'm a pet owner, and this is how the current fireworks issue affects me. From the moment fireworks go on sale, from the first boom, my pets are on high alert, and my days revolve around when can I get them outside? When will there be a lull? Can I get them out before I go to bed? Do I have to get up and take them out at one in the morning? Now, I could deal with this for a couple of days, but after five or six days of this, I am really frazzled. And while this seems to be an easy fundraiser for nonprofits, the quick and easy way isn't always the best way or even a good way. My personal opinion is that they should have never been legalized in the first place, as every year gets worse and worse. What the opponents don't seem to hear or don't seem to care is that this truly is a nightmare for some. It's a total disregard for a large segment of Omaha, most of whom did not call to complain because they either didn't feel like it would make a difference, or they didn't want to tie up the nine-one-one line. There are lots of cities that do not allow fireworks and do enforce the laws, and they find other ways to celebrate. The nonprofits could focus more on fundraising events that actually bring the community together as opposed to creating friction between neighbors. I'd like to see better enforcement, and I'd like to see the media do a better job of promoting obeying the laws, penalty warnings, and being respectful to your neighbors. The bottom line is I shouldn't have to pack up and go elsewhere, and I should not have to hide out in the basement, and I shouldn't have to drug my pets. And I shouldn't have to worry about an oversized bottle rocket going through my front door as it did to my next-door neighbor a few years back. I would like to be able to enjoy the Fourth as well. In closing, as a community, our laws should be fair to all, and while I would prefer to have a total ban, I believe this is a fair compromise. The nonprofits will still make money, and if enforced, will give the rest of us at least some periods of peace and quiet. If there was community input regarding the legalization of this several years back, I sure didn't hear about it, but maybe gathering community input going forward, we could come up with some solutions that would benefit everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next proponent.
Good afternoon. Donna Bush, twenty-three fourteen South Forty-seventh Street. I've been a resident of Omaha for almost forty years. I love my city, and I love my neighborhood. I love my city, and I love my neighborhood, but around the 4th of July, I can't wait to get out of here. I don't like Omaha. And so I am in favor of shortening the time for fireworks, the new ordinance, or even a total ban. You've all heard from the people that talk about PTSD in pets and people with breathing problems, so I'm not going to get into those issues, but I want to talk about how it affects me as a citizen personally. For me, it creates an extremely stressful environment because of the constant barrage of explosions, both night and day for the weeks, or for several weeks or more, but especially on the 3rd and 4th of July. I am exhausted from lack of sleep, jittery, on edge, and short-tempered, and just not a pleasant person to be around. And of course, it stresses my dog, which again causes me more stress. In general, it is just not good for my overall health. My solution for the past three years has been to leave town on the 3rd and 4th of July. Twice, I have traveled to a friend's farm in northeast Iowa, six hours away from Omaha. Once, I spent two nights in a motel at the Missouri Valley exit on I-29. This creates inconvenience, waste of time, and extra financial expense for me, not to mention the worry that if a firework should hit my house while I'm gone, my house might burn down. Is it just not right that I should have to leave my home over the 4th of July, just because people want to blow things up? I see no benefit to the majority of the citizens of Omaha like myself to keep the existing ordinance that allows the chaos for 10 days or more. I believe that all fireworks, other than the low noise and low air contaminating items, should be banned. Bomb-like devices such as artillery shells should be banned. I also believe that fireworks that are deemed as permissible should only be allowed on the 4th of July, the holiday of our nation's independence, and I think we should leave the big fireworks displays to the professionals. Just as importantly, when the ordinance is changed, the council needs to come up with a plan to enforce a new ordinance. It does no good to change the ordinance if there's no enforcement. First, create, I think it would really be helpful to create a public service announcement to enforce, or to inform the public of the specifics of the ordinance, the dates, and the consequences of not complying, including the exact fine that would be assessed. I did not know what the fine was for fireworks violation until I read it in the paper today. And I also had talked to some kids in my neighborhood after the 4th of July, and I said, "You know, you're not supposed to be shooting off those fireworks." "Oh, no, no, we can't." They didn't know. So I think maybe there needs to be more awareness created for the public. Second, cite and find those who do not comply with the ordinance, and perhaps even after the force, confiscate fireworks after the legal time is over. We have a lot of ordinances in our city that deal with noise, air pollution, public health and safety, littering, and so forth, but all of these are thrown out during those weeks around the 4th of July, and it's done in the name of patriotism. At some point in my life, I remember hearing or reading the statement, "Laws are created and exist for the common good of the people." I do not believe that the existing ordinance is representative of that statement. A new ordinance needs to go into effect and be enforced with citation fines and possible confiscation of fireworks. I believe that would serve the common good of the people of Omaha. Thank you.
Thank you.
Elaine Wells from 5005 Reed Street. I'm also a mental health therapist, and I'm well aware of the effects on people who suffer from PTSD. I was a dog owner until my dog died two years ago, and I remember it was such an ordeal every 4th of July and around the New Year's Eve as well, because she was terrified and she didn't want to go out. She wanted to get, I'd take her out so that she could go to the bathroom, but she wouldn't even stay out long enough to do that, because she just wanted to get away from those sounds. So like everybody else, I'm very much in favor of the mayor's proposal, and I too would like to have even less fireworks than that, but I think we do have to compromise with other people. As for the nonprofit organizations, I'm sure they can find something else to sell if they need to make more money, so I don't think we have to rely on fireworks. So here's the basis of my comment. The explosion of fireworks begins sooner, lasts longer, and is no longer limited to major public venues, but is in virtually every neighborhood, filling the air with acrid smoke and the streets with litter. Many veterans suffer from post-traumatic stress disorder, and their symptoms are triggered by fireworks, and some even evacuate their homes and go to motels far away to escape the booming sounds. At least 30 individuals went to the hospital a couple of years ago, and their injuries were due to fireworks. One man's hand was literally blown off and found 90 feet away. Noise keeps many citizens awake way past the time when they would normally go to bed, and between 32% and 63% of all Americans already suffer from insufficient sleep, so all this blasting contributes to their health problems. The smoke and particulates from fireworks are harmful to the environment and to health, especially for people who already suffer from asthma or heart conditions. Most pets are terrified by loud blasts, and they display symptoms with anxiety. Their owners try many ways to soothe them, including closing windows, turning on air conditioning, providing background noise, giving anti-anxiety medications, and even paying high rates to board their pets and kennels that are in rural areas. So I hope you will consider and vote for the mayor's proposal.
Thank you. Next proponent.
Sayeed Ali, 8504 Douglas Street. I used to work for the US Army ANCOM Headquarters and have a lot of veteran friends, and a lot of them have to leave town on fire, you know, on the Day of Independence, which they helped to win for us. Pollution levels go up 42% across the country on 4th of July. My wife and daughter have asthma, and a lot of people have asthma and other conditions that would be compromised, as well as a lot of people have talked about many, many different issues, but nobody brought up the issue of noise pollution. So that noise pollution, these loud, very, very loud noises, permanently damages your hearing of all the citizens of Omaha. So are these nonprofits going to pay for everybody's hearing aids when they need hearing aids, earlier than they would need to otherwise? Also, the number of injuries go up like crazy. Emergency rooms are needlessly busy. Children are scarred for life with fireworks injuries. So, you know, we're a high-tech country. Why can't we have laser fireworks on Bach or Beethoven rather than explosions? So I'm strongly in favor of this. I would actually be in favor of completely eliminating fireworks altogether.
Thank you. Next proponent.
Hello. Emily Anderson, 1717 Vinton Street. I'm here to voice my support for reducing the amount of time fireworks can be bought and set off. In my neighborhood, I hear, I start hearing explosions the day fireworks stands open, and then last year I heard explosions until it started snowing. So it goes way beyond the allowable time. These fireworks are set off from morning until after 11:00 PM with lots of frequency towards July 4th and continuing with less frequency after it is legal to set them off. These aren't pretty fireworks. Most of these fireworks I hear sound like bombs. The situation is out of balance. It makes sense to celebrate the 4th of July, but hearing bomb-like explosions throughout the summer is just too much. So I hope by reducing the amount of time fireworks are sold, hopefully this reduces the quantity of fireworks purchased. Thank you.
Thank you. Next proponent.
Good afternoon. My name is Lou Myers, 4927 Pinckney Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I did send a number of comments to Councilmember Festerson, including some suggestions about enforcement and ways to pay for additional enforcement. I think if we had some fines, and that would help pay for additional police to be active on the day, or indeed other public safety officials, or possibly Parks Department people who are unable to work on that day. I think it would be important for those selling the fireworks to actually put the ordinance on the tent so that people understand the dates and the amount of fireworks that are legal, and when they can be shot off, and what the punishment might be if they are caught, although most people just wait till the police go around the corner and laugh and keep going on, as we all know. I formerly worked for the City of Omaha in a number of capacities, including for the Mayor's Office and the City Council. I was a public health official for the State of Nebraska Department of Health, and so I'm quite aware of the physical issues that happen. I have a sister that's a physician, and a lot of the reported fireworks incidents that you're hearing that are reported in the emergency room aren't actually reported or recorded. A lot of them don't go to the emergency room. Some of them call their physician directly. We used to have our birthday on the 1st and 5th of July, because that's our family birthday for like four of us. She's working. I have to leave town. I have dogs. I'm also a professional dog trainer since 1995, and I do work, especially with rescue dogs, and I work with dogs that provide emotional support, and service dogs, and other types of therapy dogs. I help to train them. You know, there are a lot of things we can do to desensitize dogs, to train them to not respond. My dogs can go to Memorial Day, 4th of July. They're fine. It's the constant barrage that makes my house shake when I'm in the basement, even though I've got everything turned on, that I can't make a phone call from my basement because it is so loud in my neighborhood. We're not a small community anymore. In the more built-up parts of Omaha, where I live in Benson, when everyone has their display at the same time on July 4th, it is, I will say, worse than a war zone. I've not been there, however, I did work for the Royal Shakespeare Theater in England. I was an IRA bomb target. I have been next to the building that blew up next to me. I've had to search for bombs. I know the difference between gunshots and bombs. I have been bystander in a drive-by shooting. You know, it's not fun, okay? My dogs are working dogs. I am disabled. I don't make a lot of money training dogs. I do it for free for people these days because I can't depend on my health. We had, we tried the first year, the second year actually, because the first year we didn't expect it was going to be so loud. We went to Crescent, Iowa. We spent half the night in the car in, at Hitchcock Nature Preserve with the air conditioning and the radio on full blast, because in Crescent, Iowa, the nature preserve just passed there, 20-some miles away, you could see, feel, and hear Omaha's 4th of July celebration. I'm not against fireworks. You know, they're great. 4th of July celebration is great. I could see from 6:00 to midnight on the July 4th. We're celebrating Bastille Day, my birthday, my sister's birthday, you know, Cambodia Independence Day. It is still going on at 5:00 in the morning in my neighborhood. I personally know a child whose leg was shot off, well, blown off. He was playing with the firework, and it went off, and he didn't get to the hospital in time to save his leg. I mean, this is getting to the point where the fireworks are not only illegal, it's being irresponsible. I know parents who give their kids a bag full of fireworks, set them on the corner, they're shooting them off in an intersection. The police officer came, admonished the mother who came out of the house to see what it was all about. The police officer went around the corner. The kids continued for a week. And then I was physically and personally threatened because I called the cops. It's not acceptable. Some people don't want to be rude. Most people who are shooting fireworks want to be polite, but some people, it's if they don't get caught, it's fine. If it's not specifically illegal, it's legal. Sylvia Wagner, who was a City Council member I used to work with back in the day, always used to say, "Your rights end where my nose begins." And at this point, I've got fireworks on my sighting, in my car, under my car, directed at my dogs, directed at me. The emotional support dogs and the service dogs and the therapy dogs can't do their job. And as you may know, there's a sudden call, or an increasing call, for dogs to assist veterans. We also have refugees and immigrants who have emotional trauma from bombs and other loud noises, and they find it very threatening, and their dogs can't work. I've also been called in for bunnies, guinea pigs, rabbits, goats, pigs, horses, livestock that are traumatized, and you can't desensitize to weeks of this.
Thank you. Can we get you kind of right?
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents wishing to be heard? Saying none, are there any opponents? If you can form a line too, just like the last group.
Deanna Faila, 627 South 67th Avenue. Mr. President, City Council, I am here representing the Midtown Neighborhood Alliance. Midtown Neighborhood Alliance is an alliance of 17 historic neighborhoods in Midtown, Omaha. We voted to oppose the proposed change for these reasons. Decreasing the number of fireworks sale days and reducing sale hours would result in an estimated 30% decrease in profit for fireworks stands. And upwards of 100 nonprofit organizations directly benefit from the revenue generated by the sale of fireworks during a relatively short period of time, which is 10 days, during the 4th of July Day celebration. Not only is revenue generated, but also teamwork and volunteerism evolves as nonprofit groups pool their efforts to staff the fireworks stands in order to raise funds for special causes. This collaborative effort is a core value in our city, and we really work to promote that. At an average of $15,000 given to permit holders per stand each year, the nonprofit community has collectively received over $750,000 for programming and projects that support their vital mission and the community as a whole. That $15,000 breaks down to $1,000 per day, and no, nonprofits cannot bring in $1,000 per day in a 10-day period. So for nonprofits, $15,000 a year is good for them. Reducing the sale of fireworks by five days may cut revenue an estimated 30% from $750,000 to $525,000, with a loss of $225,000 each year. The nonprofit community will lose greatly, and so will the community at large. The work of our city's local nonprofits benefit this entire community. The nonprofits include the Omaha Children's Museum, the Hope Center, Completely Kids, ALS in the Heartland, St. Vincent de Paul, North Omaha Foundation for Human Development, Big Brothers Big Sister, the Madonna School. Interestingly enough, the disabled American veterans, the Stevens Center, Women's Center for Advancement, to just name a few. For the Midtown Neighborhood Alliance, we have received over $40,000 in fireworks revenues throughout the years. Dollars have gone back into the community and the neighborhoods to sustain the historic tree canopy in Midtown through Midtown Retreat Program. They've gone back to support many grants for neighborhood projects which serve to maintain an economically strong community. Landlord recognition awards and for special projects such as Discover Historic Midtown, Omaha, and the National USA Conference held in Omaha in 2017, which Midtown Neighborhood Alliance was able to support with firework revenues. The NUSA Conference then generated over hundreds of thousands of dollars back into Omaha through hotel stays, restaurants, and so forth. And so we do ask that you vote against the proposal to shorten the days and the time of the sale of fireworks. And we believe that the benefit of the fireworks sales and the revenue generated and used in the community and in our neighborhoods far outweighs the expressed concerns. Also, I would just like to touch upon the fodder and consideration of banning fireworks altogether. I think we have a history of that already for 50 years. La Vista, Papillion, Bellevue, and Blair has sold fireworks for 50 years while we did not. We started in 2011. So we really basically left 37 million on the table by starting 50 years later. Would we really want to go back to losing money when our profit is so great in the city? So thank you.
Thank you. We'll just come over here.
Bill Ronnick, 7676 Walnut Street. Just a little bit of historical perspective on the fireworks. 62 years ago, when I was five years old, my father would take me to Fort Calhoun, and we would buy fireworks. This city has a love of fireworks. 100,000 people at the former Rosenblatt Stadium would watch fireworks on July 2nd, 3rd, or 4th, when the Omaha Royals would play. I would hate to see this position being taken. Omaha formerly refused anything other than sparklers, and it created a disrespect for law. And Chief Schmader hit on that well, that you're causing a disrespect for law-abiding citizens, and 11-year-old is going to be fined $200, and he can't shoot off fireworks for another five years, or, you know, he gets a $300 or $400 fine, something of that nature. The city is surrounded now that Iowa Council Bluffs has agreed to the sale of fireworks. You're surrounded by Plattsmouth, Bellevue, Ralston in the middle, Wahoo, Waterloo, Blair, Fort Calhoun, and you're going to create a disrespect for law. I think the main ingredient here would be a non-threatening PSA, public service announcements, billboards. I love the comment by the one party that put on the fireworks stands the ordinances that are in place, because Omaha is going to be surrounded by the 10-day rule and ... that are in place because Omaha is going to be surrounded by the 10-day rule and the amount of calls that come in from 911 30 years ago, and I do not speak for the Omaha Police Department, but 30 years ago, when I was at the captain's aid desk, call after call after call, 9111111 would come in. I want to see a perspective on, today, everybody's got a computer and you can complain, you can drop a dime anytime. At 5:30, 6 o'clock in the morning when I was getting off my A shift, call's holding, fireworks complaint, 48th and Boyd. What time does call come in? And I'm getting it at 6:45 in the morning. Call came in 11:55 PM last night. Fireworks complaints are a priority four with 911. Please don't make an 11-year-old or a 15-year-old a criminal and cause disrespect for the law. We learned something about alcohol prohibition and I am not a proponent of gasoline and alcohol and I am not a proponent of alcohol and gunpowder, not in the least. There has to be a compromise. I don't think, Mayor, this is the right compromise. I think the PSA and educating people and the 52 people that signed our Declaration of Independence on July 2nd, Benjamin Franklin, "We all hang together or we shall all surely hang." The perspective of why we have our independence, I think, has been lost. And I think that needs to come into a PSA or a Public Service Announcement or, "Don't scare people. Oh, we're going to put you in jail. We're going to confiscate your stuff." It doesn't make any difference to an 11-year-old or a 13-year-old or a 15-year-old. And if you look at the demographics on who's buying the fireworks, maybe Dad is, but he's giving it to the kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come back over here.
Mr. President, Councilmembers. Kathleen Berg, 3300 North 60th Street, appearing today on behalf of Catholic Charities. I will state upfront that we do not have an issue with shortening the discharge period, but we do benefit significantly from the fireworks sales. And we use these proceeds to advance our mission, which hopefully you are aware of. We do serve some of the neediest people in our community through our pantries, through our domestic violence shelter, our immigration legal services, and a whole host of other programs and services. So, we believe, as was stated earlier, that shortening that period for sale is really going to impact that revenue generation and ultimately the resources that we have available to really provide those life-saving programs here in our community. So, what we would respectfully ask is that you consider keeping the current ordinance in place with respect to the selling season and then deal with the discharge season separately. Thank you.
Thank you. Come back over here.
Vince Bellino, Bellino Fireworks, 501 Olson Drive, Papillion, Nebraska. Wanted to make a couple of points clear to start with. First, there is a difference between the sale of fireworks and the discharge of fireworks. That's been proven over time here in the city of Omaha. Previous to 2011, you could not sell or you could not discharge fireworks in the city. Yet thousands and thousands of Omaha residents would come to the surrounding communities and buy fireworks, go back to Omaha, and use the fireworks. So, there is a clear distinction between the two of those. Also, who I represent today, we partner with 35 different nonprofit organizations in the city of Omaha. I'm here on their behalf. I'm not here on behalf of Bellino Fireworks today. Bellino Fireworks, as a fireworks vendor and other fireworks vendors in this community, we have the opportunity to sell in Papillion, La Vista, Ralston, Bellevue, and now Council Bluffs. Given that opportunity, an Omaha resident that's going to purchase fireworks early on during the season, they will go to our surrounding communities. They will purchase fireworks there. It is not for Bellino Fireworks, it is for the 35 nonprofit organizations that we represent. A little bit of what our nonprofits are saying, what they're wanting to be represented as, is they want a level playing field when it comes to the sale of fireworks. They want the same opportunity with the 10-day window that the surrounding communities are given. Some of the nonprofit uses have already been touched on, tuition assistance in schools, youth sports programs, special needs programs, mentoring programs, and again, veterans. They are all supported by the proceeds that come from fireworks sales. A little bit of a daily breakdown on fireworks sales. The first four days of sales account for roughly 15 to 25% of the whole sales window. We completed over 3,600 transactions in the 15 locations that we had, and that's Monday through Thursday of 2018. If that includes a weekend, that number will spike. Approximately 240 transactions per location in Omaha on average. 240 times the 15 permits, that's over 12,000 transactions that happened in the first four days of the selling season. 2018 versus 2017, a little bit about opening day sales. 2018, we could sell on Monday. 2017 was Sunday. Sales were off 30 to 40% because of the Sunday, because of the weekend. 2018 versus 2016, again, on Monday and Tuesday compared to a Saturday and Sunday, sales were off 40 to 50%. So, that 10-day window allows us to catch that weekend. That weekend is very important to the sales. Selling days 5 through 8, June 29th through July 2nd, roughly 25 to 35% of the sales occur. The selling days 9 and 10, July 3rd and 4th, roughly 50% of sales occur, not the 80% that was stated before. Over the entire season, we completed over 27,000 transactions in the city of Omaha at our 15 locations. It's approximately 1,840 per Omaha location. That's over 92,000 transactions in the city of Omaha. That's 92,000 residents in support of the current fireworks ordinance. And to us, you could probably multiply that by two or three times when you have a community or a neighborhood that does a block party and they send one person to purchase fireworks. A little bit about cutting the early sales period. If we cut the early sales period, those purchases will still occur. The Omaha residents will go to the surrounding communities or they will go to Council Bluffs. The two people most affected by that would be the city of Omaha themselves, losing tax dollars to Iowa, or the nonprofit organizations not able to capitalize on that sales window. We received over 100 phone calls at our office prior to June 25th, residents wanting to know where they can purchase fireworks from. And of course, they can purchase fireworks in Council Bluffs. Most of those transactions went to Council Bluffs. The state of Iowa regulates the sales window. Council Bluffs cannot restrict the sales window of fireworks. They are given June 1st through July 8th in a permanent building, June 13th through July 8th in a temporary structure. The city of Council Bluffs last year had an ordinance in place to restrict the use of fireworks to June 29th and June 30th, which is Friday and Saturday, and July 4th. A little bit about the city of Omaha and the revenue generated just for the city of Omaha when it comes to fireworks. Each year, there's 50 permits awarded and there's a permit fee of $2,500 attached to each permit. That's $125,000 the city receives. There's an application fee of $150. Per application, there's roughly 110 applicants each year. That's another $16,500. Just based on our sales in the city of Omaha, tax dollars generated is anywhere between $300 and $400,000 for the city of Omaha. That's between $450,000 and $550,000 for the city of Omaha each and every year. I've heard plenty of great suggestions on how to identify the discharge window, a PSA. There's $500, there's half a million dollars sitting there for the city of Omaha to use for a PSA or putting on a website or putting together a non-distress phone call number. A little bit about the application fee or the permit fee. Bellevue charges a $600 fee, Papillion charges $1,000, Ralston has zero, La Vista has $2,000. The city of Omaha is $500 more expensive than anywhere else. To us, if the sales window is shortened, the value of a permit is $250 per day. If there's two days taken off the permit to sell, there should be $500 taken off that permit fee. A little bit about the estimated nonprofit going back to the community. With our 15 organizations, it's roughly $250,000 going back to those different nonprofit organizations just in the city of Omaha. Local job creation. Approximately 200-plus employees we hire each and every summer. If we lose the four days to sell, it'll be a loss in between $200 and $250,000 in local wages if we cut it down to a six-day window. Our suggestion is, again, if you want to look at the discharge window, we are happy to look at the discharge window. But the selling season, we believe, should stay at the 10-day window. There's really been no data or supportive information on why we should cut the selling season. It's all been on the discharge and the use.
Thank you. Next opponent.
My name is Teresa Kirby. I'm at, I'll say, 22nd and Lake area downtown. I have a couple of questions regarding the fireworks. We're limiting sales from our nonprofits. We're limiting what our citizens can do. What about the CenturyLink that sets off the fireworks during the College World Series? Those don't bother the dogs or the other people? I live very close by and it rattles my house, but I'm okay with that. I am Baby Angel's grandmother. My daughter could not get through to 911 July 5th from people calling and complaining about the fireworks. I feel that our 911 center needs upgraded before we make any further changes because clearly they cannot handle the calls. And I'm aware, they're going to have, you know, a manned line, but for how long? From June 1st until the end of July? Is that in the budget? Before we go making changes, we need to ensure that Douglas County 911 can handle those changes. I implore you, consider this in 2020, but 2019 is too soon. We need to get our 911 call center up and able to handle the influx of calls that are going to be going on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We're sorry for your loss. Next opponent.
Hello, I'm Brenda Banks and I represent Cross Training Center, one of the nonprofits that have had opportunity, six years out of the seven, to have a tent. My address is 5030 North 72nd Street. I want to say that I do oppose the reduction to five days for the selling season and for the discharge season, but I do agree that the discharge season being five days and the selling season being 10 would be the best alternative for everybody. I've heard everything today and I agree with most of what was said, but I want to come from a different perspective that you haven't heard today, and that is from a tent manager doing what it takes to make this tent go. Five days, the first five days that it takes, it really takes you getting organized and preparing for that five days, for the second five days. And we talk about that as we're preparing. So, I want to actually take you back to before the 10-day even begins, and that's the two-day rush preparing for the day that we open. And that's where the crazies begin for us because our tent company usually erects the tent and we have two days to prepare for the fire marshal. All we are thinking about is the fire marshal and the building inspector and everything that goes into making sure that this is a safe environment for the customers. At the end of that two days and we get our wonderful permit, then we start thinking about what it takes for the next 10 days for our customers. And what happens is that first five days, we are finishing setting up the shelves, or not setting up the shelves, but filling the shelves with inventory and little, or less than 10% of our customers come in during those first five days. You've heard some of the numbers already and I'll say that in my numbers for these six years, less than 15% of my sales happen in those first five days. But what does that mean to me? That means that those five days are utilized to prepare for the second five days. It also is interesting that we have 20% of our people come in and shop that don't buy. And what's happening is they're doing a lot of comparison shopping. There's families out there that are in a budget. They say, "I'm going to spend $150, $250," whatever that dollar amount is, and they come in early to shop and price compare so that they're prepared and then they later come back to purchase. I really believe that we need to understand that that buying behavior is important. And if we take those days away, those families will be forced to either make snap decisions or not have the ability to do that price comparison. So, it's an important aspect that we need to consider. The other thing is, is we really need to realize that the weather, the rain, has a lot to do with that 10 days. And that's another point that has not been brought up today. This season alone, out of the 10 days, five nights we had rain. Two of the days and evenings were virtually nobody in the tent buying or comparison shopping because of the rain dates. It's important to realize that, of course, we're always going to have rain dates in those 10 days, but if we reduce it down to five days, that's really going to substantially limit people from doing that shopping, doing the comparison, and then ultimately buying what they want to buy. So, that's another factor that we need to consider. The next part, back to the calendar. If we reduce this to five days, then you need to realize that two out of seven years, we will not have a weekend for a selling period, during that selling period. That will be, that's a crucial point when you consider how people shop. Our Saturdays and Sundays are when people shop. Friday evenings is when people shop. And if we take those days away just simply because we want to mandate a less period of time, then it really does cause them inconveniences that we need to consider. So, again, I just wanted to bring those points across because they hadn't really been discussed earlier. I really believe that we need to focus on preparing or communicating to the community what these ordinances are. I cannot tell you how many times people come into my tent and tell me what they think the ordinance is and we have to correct them. Honestly, what really messes things up is one person will come in and say, "Channel so-and-so said this." The next person will come in and say, "Channel so-and-so said this," and it will be completely opposite. So, it's almost like it depends on what channel of news you watch. That's the information you're going to go with. We really need to do a better job of presenting this information to the community so they know the ordinances and therefore they can follow. And so, I think the PSA idea is great. I think that's something that we all should consider.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next opponent.
My name's Frank Bartlett. I'm with the Cross Training Center as well at 5030 North 72nd Street. I wasn't planning on talking today, but I'm up here, I'm listening to everybody. And I'm a veteran. I suffer from PTSD personally. I run that tent and see what we get to do with that money, okay? And that is more important to me than the sounds that I hear. I know the difference. Chief, I'm sure you can tell the difference between a gunshot.
You have to address your.
Excuse me. I know the difference between the sound of a gunshot. I know the difference between the sound of a rocket or a motor coming at me. And I know the difference between an artillery shell that is an inch and a quarter in diameter with less than 60 grams of powder in it. And it's a lot different, okay? I'm a pet owner and I have to deal with these things, just as everybody else has had to. But I think it's important that you can tell that the DAV has been, has taken monies from these sales. The way that we conduct ourselves with these fireworks is different from how we sell them. And that is the bigger problem that we have. Iowa started selling last year and you can take a look at the sales rates. This year, I've been a part of that. Last year, we didn't have a permit. I can see a drastic change in our sales numbers because of that, okay? And diminishing those by five more days is just going to simply make that worse for Omaha and for the nonprofits that are here. People are going to go out and buy them. They're going to shoot them off no matter what. If they can get them in neighboring cities or just across the river, it doesn't matter. We're going to have that issue no matter what. And I'm still going to deal with those exact same issues as well as other, all my other pet owners and all my other veterans. They're still going to deal with those things. So, I look at this as a simple way of just diminishing the abilities that we have to take those monies and help my veterans and others in my community and not anything else.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Are there any other opponents?
We see minus 518 North 40th Street. I also was not going to speak on this, but, and I don't want to repeat some points, so I'm just gonna make two points. I saw the amendment to this and I don't think that what is put forth should be, should lead to imprisonment. The less, more imprisonment isn't the solution to, to this situation with all the various concerns. And then also, my second point is that the, the setting off of fireworks, I mean, there's so many different kinds of fireworks. I remember when I was a kid, I liked to set off the, the one with the rooster to make a very high pitched sound, but it wasn't bothering people. So I think the sound variations of the firework is something that the council should take a look at. You know, if, if you ban certain, you know, when you measure the sound, you can regulate the measurement on the fireworks. You can call the manufacturers of a seller of, of, of the fireworks. If they don't know what the measurement of a sound is, they can call the manufacturers and that's another way you can deal with certain sound levels. So that's what I would have to say to this.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Seeing none, we'll allow the mayor two minutes rebuttal.
Thank you very much. One comment that I did want to make is I was on the city council when we passed this ordinance, and I remember very distinctly our conversation at the time and the reason why we wanted an ordinance. It wasn't for the nonprofits to make money, that was the side benefit. The reason we passed it is to provide control because it is true, when it was not legal in the city of Omaha, people would go into other states, they would go and to buy fireworks, and what we wanted, or the thought was at that time, is that if we would allow tents in Omaha and regulate the type of fireworks that were sold in those tents in Omaha, which are the, the fireworks that are defined, commercial fireworks by state law, then the majority of people hopefully would buy the fireworks in the tents in Omaha and we would have greater control over what types that they were letting off during that period. A side benefit was for the nonprofits to make money. And as you all remember, in the beginning, there wasn't 50, I can't even remember the number of permits, 35? In the beginning, and we started raise, and we raised it up as the years went on. Of most of the opponents, as they were talking, they were talking just about money. Mr. Bellino, just about the money that was made, and this just wasn't about this ordinance, about making money for the Bellinos or making money for the nonprofits. Again, that was a side benefit of it. So I think that we need, I want to keep focused on these people that came up and talked from the Humane Society, from our citizens, from those who find, find this period of time very, very difficult to deal with and all the reasons that we have had numerous emails and complaints, hotline calls that we all have shared with you today and you have received yourself. We are here to represent the citizens of Omaha, and that's what I'm asking you to do. We are not here to represent the Bellinos to make money or, you know, the nonprofits either. We are glad that they make money with it. But again, we issue those permits every year. Every city council member gets to pick, pick a few, I get to pick a few. And just because you have a permit this year, there's no guarantee you'll have it next year or you'll ever have it again because there are so many worthy nonprofits that are asking for permits. And right now, we only give 50, so thank you.
Thank you. With that, the public hearing is closed. We'll start at the end. If you're ready, Councilmember Melton, we'll work our way backwards.
Oh, thank you. You know, I'm just glad today I was taking the time to listen to everybody that came down. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Talking, okay, okay. I have no microphones. I want to thank everybody for taking your time because I, no matter what we do with this, with this ordinance, we're gonna make a number of people unhappy. That's the unfortunate thing, I think, of what we do here on, on the city council with this issue alone. But I go back to, it, it comes down to more the enforcement issue, which I agree with Chief Schmodder. I mean, we, we need to have our, our police officers responding to higher priority calls and not just fireworks. And I think what we really need is for the citizens of Omaha to just be more responsible. So what I did is I drafted an ordinance increasing the penalties for doing fireworks to try and deter people from lighting them off outside of the given time. Whether we reduce it to five, seven, or keep it at 10, people have the opportunity to let off their fireworks. They have plenty of time, let's do it just during that time and during those days so that all the people that came down here that oppose this, who even want bans on it, you know, they're gonna have to put up with a few days, whatever that number is that we decide here. But I really think we need people to take some personal responsibility. I do like the, the idea of doing some more PSAs. I, I don't, you know, I don't know if we have that budgeted at this point, but maybe there'd be a nonprofit that might want to step up since we have all these nonprofits, or perhaps the Bellinos or some of the other fireworks people would maybe join in and contributing to that fund for the PSAs since there's so much money that's being made off them. Those are just some of the, the thoughts I had. I've listened to everybody that came down today, proponents and opponents. This is not an easy thing to decide, in all honesty. We've got great, great people representing the nonprofits who are making money off it. We have good intentioned people, we have veterans with PTSD. I myself, I called Mr. Lang and I had a dog over Memorial Day, I had a neighbor lighting off fireworks, so completely outside of the Fourth of July time. And I had a, a dog, my sister's dog, actually almost died because the other dogs trampled it. So I, I think I told a number of people who emailed me, his name's Lucky. Fortunately, he was lucky and he did survive after multiple surgeries. But it all stemmed from one of those artillery shells that just freaked all the dogs out. But again, this is on Memorial Day when we should be celebrating veterans and what, and what they, they do. So what I think we need to do is focus on not just the enforcement part, but deterring people from, from lighting them off. So that's why I, I've put forth, regardless of how, what we decided to do on this ordinance, I would like to amend it to increase the penalties. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harding?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll echo some of what Councilmember Melton said, but also want to add a couple other things. I too was listening to both sides and, and some of the points that were made, and, and actually, one of the, the points that I think was made by the, the opponents of, of amending this, I'm gonna work with the Law Department so that in the future, that it is not only maybe posted on the tent, but maybe we print on the receipt or have next to a registered the, the ordinance or at least the basics of the ordinance so that people do know what the days that they can discharge and what the days, or the hours of the day that they can set those off as well. I found it interesting, and I, I too, and I, I apologize, Rebecca, actually, I, I was still responding to fireworks emails this morning. I, I went back and I did not get to you and between bikini bars and bottled pills and fireworks, I, I've gotten a little behind on my, my email, so I apologize, I did not get to yours yet. But I, I think, I think the, the number of people who responded, it's, it was absolutely incredible. I think actually, having the Fourth of July in the middle of the week this year really made the situation kind of exaggerated to the point where people were setting them off the weekend before, the weekend after, and actually weeks after in, in some regard. But I think the, I think limiting the, the number of days, and I, I think we've heard some testimony that even support the, the fact that the majority of the sales don't happen in those first couple of days, it's only 15 or 20% for the first four days is, I think, what my notes said. So I, and, and I, I had some calls that I fielded from some of the people who said that the, that it would reduce the amount of, of income to some of the nonprofits. Well, my response to that, and I think has been said already, but I'll echo it, is that you're not guaranteed that license every year, that permit every year. And, and I said to, to one person in particular that if, if anyone is relying on that revenue stream year after year as a definite income or revenue, I, I don't think you should be running an organization that way. I mean, I think if you get the permit, I mean, that's maybe kind of gravy to, to what you might be able to do this year with those proceeds, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's a very good way to run the operation to, to think that those revenues are guaranteed year after year. I, I think, we won't be voting on this today, this, the public hearing, we'll vote on this actually on August 7th, and I think it's, I think it is a compromise and I, I will be supportive of reducing the number of days that you can purchase and reducing the times of the day that you can ignite fireworks. And if we go around again, I might have some other comments, but at this time, I'll yield to Mr. Pauls.
Thank you. Does the Chairman of the Law committee have any comments?
I do have a few, and I'm gonna start out with this. After listening both sides today and seeing what the mayor has proposed, I'm going to ask, because we're not voting today, that the Law Committee take a look at what the mayor has offered and to what the people have told us, and we meet together and with the staff and try to come up with some modifications, 'cause I do believe we do need to modify, and then make sure that all of you have a chance to take a look at it. That's just what I said, one of the things I'm gonna propose that the Law Committee does do. Here, here, I jotted down a few things that was happening today. I started off today talking about birthdays, 'cause I was trying to show you where basically I started with this meeting in my mind. We all have a birthday one day, and we, most of us celebrate it for one day. We don't celebrate it for weeks. There may be a few of us, like our chairman, he may celebrate it for, but normally we celebrate one day and we may go out and buy gifts for three or four days. And then I got to thinking, especially when I heard, when one of the people spoke up about, let me see, you got really patriotic, you talked about what happened a couple hundred years ago when the 13 original, I didn't use some of this verbiage, but the 13 out of the 15 colonies decided to become a nation of themselves, they had a birthday, July the 4th. So let's see, I'm saying, okay, if I should celebrate my birthday on a day and maybe buy some gifts for myself or have somebody buy them for me for a few, maybe we ought to do that as a city, sort of shrink the number of days available to sell and to blow off the, the gifts. That's where I started from, but after listening to both sides, my mind is going back and forth. But here are a couple of things I just want to point out. Vendors, I know there's several you sitting here, three years ago called you guys together 'cause I knew there's something up in the air, and it wasn't fireworks, that I could just feel by the, the questions that people are having. And I can tell you, it was pretty quiet on your side of some of the changes that need to be made. I'm sitting there, 'cause I'm really trying to, okay, let's get this thing moving a little bit, and the suggestions were very minimal, as I can recall. Now here's another thing, and I'm not very happy with this at the city. And I'll have to ask our Finance Department if it's-
He'll have to come down to the mic.
Okay. He's got a big voice. That'd keep you awake.
Steve Curtis, City Finance?
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. I can recall when I first became part of this council, that we had money set aside for safety, I thought, on fireworks.
There was $125,000 starting in 2012 that went to the National Safety Council.
And what have we done with that money?
I believe with all the needs that there were seen at community service, there was an idea that maybe a few years of whatever work was done or accomplished with that might have been enough and those funds were diverted to other charities.
Okay, okay. So my, my question is, 'cause I've heard a number of people say that we need to have more information out about fireworks. Is that money still there or is it dispersed totally?
There's money that is dispersed to many other charities at this point and other initiatives around the city to do various things, and right now, there's nothing going to the National Safety Council.
But we did to what, to Nebraska Safety Council, is that?
Yes. I think it's National Safety Council, I believe it's called.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm, that just, when I heard about needing all this additional help, let the people know about it, that's where I, okay, fine, thank you, I appreciate your, your information here. And here's another thing too, and I, although there probably a number of us in here are not veterans of battles that would cause some mental anguish, but it surprises me the number of veteran organizations that do apply for fire, for permits. There are a number of them. Some years there are several and some years there are not. I think, as I can recall, GI Forum did, did this year, but in the past, we've had several, so that's where I'm going back and forth on this. And I'll have to be honest, I looked up how much overtime and then, and the public's gonna have to, if they want more police out there on overtime, I looked up what, what we have been spending on overtime, not for fireworks, but in 2017 on overtime and the police, we spent, this is actual, we spent close to $4 million. So if you start adding more overtime, that has to go up, 'cause I'm assuming very little of that went to fireworks, people working on that. And for 2018, we have appropriated about 2.7, 2.7 million for 2018. That's appropriated, and I'm assuming it'll be higher because when it actually comes in. We're spending a lot of money for overtime for police, so if we're going to expect them to do that, we're gonna have to be willing to spend more money. It's just that simple. And I have to be honest with you, I think it's gonna get tougher for the police to be out there because if we squeeze their things down, well, okay, we've done that, who's gonna be the next person who's in charge of making sure that nothing happens? And I think that's gonna be very difficult. I do think that is, is a major issue. And I have to be honest, I was thoroughly impressed with Mr. Bellino when you told me how many hundreds, or how many thousands of people went to your stands, and then I started in my mind, okay, that many thousands of people, the amount of money, if we're talking about the money, I know the mayor's not, but if we're talking about money, this is a very lucrative business. I don't know if it is or not, I'm just doing from, in my mind, the number of people, and then I'm, now I'm talking on of, of, when you're dealing with the nonprofits. I know nonprofits, some people say, "Well, they need to look for other monies." Well, I can tell you, you've never really been really working with, as a nonprofit 'cause they're out there working their tails off trying to get money. So it's logic that this would be a logical thing for them to do. And I know money, as, as the mayor pointed out, is not the issue, but to me, if, if this is gonna happen, we have to take a look at that. So I'm going to challenge the nonprofits. If you talk to me as a vendor, you make sure that you're getting your correct amount. Talk to all of them. Do not sign three-year contracts that tie you down. I have seen the amount of money that comes in from different nonprofits. I'm just telling you, be more business-wise. That's the part I'm telling, I, I'm telling you, I see two issues. The enforcement, which is gonna fall on the chief, which is gonna be unbelievable, and the, and the, my other goal would be if, when I have nonprofits involved in this, make sure you get your, your chunk of change. I want the vendors to make their chunk, 'cause I think you will, 'cause you're smart individuals out there. But that's one of those things that, as I'm listening to. And, and I'm just gonna show you how naive that we can really be, especially me, 'cause since you had a little bit of story yourself. About 20 years ago, I'm sitting in my backyard and my next-door neighbor's a doctor, and he's over there doing fireworks, and I'm just sitting in my backyard, and there's no fence, 'cause it's just a really nice area where nobody needs fences. And I said, "This guy is a nerd," 'cause he had those plastic goggles on, and I, I mean, I looked, I said, "My goodness, man," and I was even joking. Well, about, you know, and as the night went on, I'm sitting over there and all of a sudden, into the evening, we're just sitting there watching, to, to this day, I have eye damage simply because something flew over from the other yard into my eye. And I, here again, I'm making fun of the doctor who has the goggles on, I'm sitting over here totally away from the fireworks. So I, I understand the value of safety and, you know, once you have that, it's there forever. Now I'm gonna back up again, I was going to make sure everybody understands, I'm proposing that, that we throw this back to the committee to, to work with what the mayor has brought up and go forth. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo, would you wish to be heard?
Yeah, thank you, President Jerome. Yeah, no, it's fine. I'll, I'll try not to echo too much, but I think the words that I keep hearing come up from my notes is compromise and enforce- my notes is compromise and enforcement. I guess when I first heard of this proposal to amend this ordinance, and I heard of the couple groups, and I'll be jumping around to scratch out what we've already talked about, the two that really caught my attention was the Veterans Committee and then the Humane Society, both, because, sitting here as a veteran, I can tell you that PTSD is real, and it depends on what level you have it, but I think every veteran that served active duty has it. So when I hear the Veterans Committee say, well, we like that, we're going to reduce it, I was very surprised to say, or hear, that they weren't for a total ban, just to be honest. And that's the same thing with the Humane Society, when I thought, gosh, did they ask these pets, is five days okay for what they can handle? What's wrong with four or six? And I was surprised that it wasn't a total ban from them also. And I did listen to both sides, I learned something from both sides. And I don't think, like Councilmember Melton said, I don't think we're going to make everybody happy regardless of what we decide here. Somebody's going to walk away not happy. So we have to get together as a group and try to figure out how we're going to make this work. And we can say it's not about money, and maybe it's not, but we got some figures on citations, and then the number changed, and then I asked today for another figure, and it was very late, so I apologize for that. But if my math was right, from the task force that we had put together this year, each citation was about $400 that it cost us in overtime to write. So where do you get that money from? Well, you get that money from selling fireworks. And if you can't sell the fireworks, I guess the question goes to, without calling anybody up, my question would be, how many of these complaints came from fireworks that were bought in Douglas County, or, sorry, City of Omaha? We don't know, because you can buy them so close to every neighboring area. But I can tell you that everything it cost us to try to enforce this did come from the City of Omaha, because we had to pay these employees to take care of it. So you hear from the fire and the police, and actually from the parks, too, because you forget about that. You forget about people go to the parks, and then the next day, we do have to go clean those up, and we spend so much time trying to keep those nice. It's tough. We're not going to make everybody happy. And we did receive a flurry of emails last week, but I can say, sitting here, that I've got more emails regards to fireworks, only being on the City Council a small amount of time, more than anything else that I've gotten, and they keep coming even today. So when you talk about that compromise, and you talk about the enforcement, there's going to have to be a compromise. But the problem is, how are we going to enforce it? Because 10 days, obviously, it's not working, it could be seven, five, three, one, even the ban. I think the chief had said something out last year in an email that I couldn't find that said, we just don't have the resources, it's not possible to ban these and for us to be able to stay on top of it, which is logical. So you hear both sides, you try to think of what you're going to do to move forward, and then I instantly go to, man, are we stepping over our bounds? Is it not long before we have people coming up saying, hey, my neighbors have too many Christmas lights, or the neighbor down the street gives out too many pieces of Halloween candy? I mean, where do we go with this? And I guess that's what we'll have to decide on the council, on what we're going to come up with best, so that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I've heard a lot of this issue from my constituents over the years, I heard from many of them today, and it makes sense, when I see the data the chief presented, that a lot of the complaints have come from my area. So I have been interested in this topic for quite some time, and the notion of reducing this timeframe, I think, is a good one, and one that I support in that respect. It's reasonable what's being proposed and talked about today in terms of reducing that timeframe, but still allowing folks to enjoy the Independence Day, and to enjoy fireworks, and have that celebration of our country. And let's not forget, we also have that capability on New Year's, too. That hasn't been talked about too much here today, but that's a current city ordinance as well. And I see why it makes some sense to do the five days in the five days, because we have five days around for New Year's time. And I think, when you're talking about ordinances that are hard to enforce, simplicity and consistency is good. People understand those laws and why they aren't different, and don't get confused in that respect. Chief, if you would, I wanted to ask you one question, maybe two questions. Having said that, we all support the nonprofits that are here today and that have benefited by this, and I want to address that here in a minute. So whatever we do, we want to be sensitive to that, even though I do agree that's a secondary concern in this conversation, but we are very supportive of those causes, and want to make sure we aren't unduly creating a burden from them in this picture. So one proposition that was forwarded today a few times was, well, what if we did, in fact, reduce the discharge period, but not the sales period? What if that remained 10 days? When I think about that personally, I can think of why the inconsistency could cause some problems from an enforcement perspective. It's essentially saying, okay, you can go buy whatever you want to buy, but then you have to hold it for a certain amount of days, and you can't shoot it off until a few days later. But I was interested in getting your perspective on what that would mean for enforcement, if in fact those two timeframes were different.
Well, it's a great question. I don't know if I'm the most, the best person to answer that. One of the things that I said from the start, I didn't really want to weigh in on the sale period, because it was a little out of my purview. But if it's in the possession of somebody, there's that temptation to use it, of course. And when we had it, when there was, if there would be a total ban, they used it anyways. So there can be an assumption made that if it's purchased, it's in possession of somebody, I don't think they're going to necessarily wait until the actual day they can fire the fireworks off. I think we would have, we'd have a side issue. It may not be astronomical, but we would have some type of side issue.
Okay. So if those two periods were, if it was amended and those two periods were different, that would cause you some concern?
It would.
Okay. And then talk about the theory behind the five-day enforcement period as well, in terms of, as we've all noted, 10 days is hard to enforce, a ban would be hard to enforce, I think five days is hard to enforce, but do you see an improvement in enforcement, five days compared to 10, or some other time?
I do, I do. I do think if it's five days, you'll cut our complaints in half. And conversely, if you meant 20 days, you'd double our complaints. So I think we could see a reasonable reduction in complaints, and that condensed timeframe will also allow for more poignant enforcement at a less costly measure. And that's something, we probably could quadruple our enforcement if that was the desire of the council, if we went to five days. But the 10 days is just, it's unbelievable we had to do so.
All right, thank you. And then, Mr. Bolino, if you would, too, I had a follow-up question for you. I've been interested in this conversation about the permits and the nonprofits and the impact when we talk about discharge versus sales periods, and I appreciate the testimony provided, that was informative and helpful in terms of the numbers you had prepared for us. And so some of these questions, I don't want to put you on the spot with, and you may or may not want to answer them, and you don't have to. In fact, I think the ordinance says there is some proprietary information within these permits and how the tents work that does not have to be disclosed. But my first question for you is, I think you mentioned you had partnerships with 35 of the nonprofits, so that means 35 of the 50 permits you're working with or have worked with?
No, we helped 35 organizations apply. Of the 35, we helped apply, 15 received a permit.
Okay. So of the 15, are you able to describe what the partnerships look like, how that works?
Yeah, there's a mixture of partnerships. Some organizations apply for the permit, receive the permit, and then actually operate the stand themselves, and they receive a percent of sales. Typically, that's the better, more profitable approach for them. And then other organizations apply for a permit, and they do not operate the location. They are kind of a, it's like writing a grant, if you will, they receive a flat fee amount for holding the permit.
And when you say that's the majority, in terms of that model, is that the majority at this point?
For us, about 50/50.
Okay. And there's about two other main vendors, too, that are kind of in the mix?
I would say so, yes.
Probably a similar balance of, yeah. And I agree with the notion, the notion you provided, that, you know, if the timeframe is reduced, perhaps consideration should be made of the permit fee as well, that is substantial, and I think a substantial line item in the net sales that you're trying to generate and provide to nonprofits. But I have noticed and felt the observation we just had, that I think when this first started in 2011, it was much more a proposition about having nonprofits get together and embrace their memberships and their supporters, to have a tent, and have volunteers, and have it be an engagement situation for them, as well as maximizing their profit in that instance. And those that still do that, do maximize their profit, and they're the ones on the shortlist that are making more money than the others. I think a majority, it seems to me, are now going with the model, though, where they're essentially having the vendor apply for the permit, essentially purchase the permit, run the stand, and they get a flat fee of some kind, or maybe a percentage, I'm not sure how you'd do it, but so, it's a, not as much money as the vendor makes in that respect, in the numbers I've seen. And I'm not blaming anyone for having a business, or making money, or providing that service, and I don't blame the nonprofits for seeking that service, because that's a heck of a lot easier, right, for the permit you get, and for the money you might obtain from that. But I do think it's gotten a little bit away from what we originally intended in terms of maximizing that benefit to nonprofits, so I wanted to observe that today. And you can sit down, too, now, I'm trying to ask you questions, but I appreciated your discussion today. So for me, that's a factor. The last two things I think I would just note are, when we talk about fines, I'm open to increasing fines and what that might mean to enforcement, or really getting people's attention. I'm a little concerned, though, about what a few have said with the possible jail time around that, and the criminalization of something like fireworks, that I don't think is probably necessary, but interested in the fine conversation. And then lastly, a lot of conversation and advocacy for PSAs and what that could do to help this situation. And I agree, it might be helpful, but I'm glad Mr. Pauls and Mr. Curtis had the exchange on the history on that, because there did used to be a line item for that in the budget, $125,000 to the Safety Council. But part of why that was removed also was because it was seen as ineffective. We didn't see any impact in that in the community for the money we were spending that was making any difference in terms of people's behavior around fireworks. And maybe it just wasn't done as well as it could have been done, or maybe it wasn't enough money to impact that, so I'm open to that idea again, but I did want to observe that, in my view, that was not effective in previous years. So at this point, I'll end by saying, I'm interested in this conversation, I'm supportive of reducing the timeframe. I look forward to working with the Law Committee on something that a majority of council members will support in this respect in the next two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Festerson. In terms of the permit holders and the charities, do the properties generally that the commercial property owners make available for these 50 tents in Omaha, do they give that, their land away, or do they typically charge?
Yeah, they definitely charge, and some of them are up there.
And in terms of the 10-day lease prices that are charged to the permit holders, and then passed back on to the charities that come out of what they make, what are those range, rent ranges that you hear?
For lease amounts that we pay?
Yes.
The lease amounts can be anywhere between, I would say, $5,000 and $15,000 to what we pay to a landlord.
And then, the tents that the fireworks are sold in, is that another expense that the charity has to pay, that comes out of what they make?
If you're referring to what the nonprofits have to pay, they don't pay any of that.
Is it a cost?
It's solely responsible for, from Bolino Fireworks.
Does it get passed on to them, though, in the net?
They get, they receive a percent of the sales typically, and so whatever the sale percent, whatever the sales are, they receive a percent of that.
What about labor?
Is it, if they're, no.
Security?
No.
Electrical? The semi-trailer?
That's all responsibility.
And your, what about your competitors? What are they doing, do you know?
I can't speak for them.
Okay. I'm, had a few that contacted me that said that what, they had to bear all those lease costs, and electrician costs, and security costs, and semi-trailer rental costs, and then there's the cost of the inventory. And so all of that is at risk in terms of getting that done upfront, and then you have the period of time that where you try to capture back in terms of what the net is that they ultimately see that comes off the top in terms of the money. I just wondered what your operation was.
Everything is the sole responsibility of us and our company, and they receive a percent of the sales, so any expenses that we incur are ours, it's not on.
Thank you. Are you aware of any community that has, shares a boundary or border with Omaha that does not allow for the sale of fireworks?
Not off the top of my head, no. At one point, obviously, it was Iowa, but that is recently lifted.
What, if any, information do you give the customers at the time of sale in terms of handouts as to fireworks?
So we, our bags, our sacks, if you will, belong to an industry association, and those bags are printed with information on safety and how to properly use fireworks. It's kind of an industry-wide thing that we do, we purchase those bags, try to inform the consumer of the proper way to discharge and use fireworks.
Okay. I would assume you wouldn't have any problem handing out information in terms of what the rules were, so to speak, and the bullet points of that, if they were to change, and you were to be required to do that?
Not at all.
In terms of the, there's been two different sides in terms of when you make your money, and how that money's made, and we've heard, so tell me how that works on the sales in terms of the midweek, 4th of July, versus the weekend, 4th of July, and how many, what the days are, and when the percentages of money generally come in.
Yeah, I mean, there's a breakdown, again, it will depend on the weekend. If you can sell on a weekend, you're definitely going to see a greater purchase volume in fireworks. If you can, if that 10-day window includes two weekends, on a year-to-year basis, I can see us being up 15, 20 percent, and that goes straight back to those nonprofits as well. And so it does matter what day of the week the 4th of July falls on, or that sales window falls on, it definitely has an effect on sales.
Thank you. I've received a number of emails on this, too, and on both sides, and I'd like to thank my constituents, Ms. Bush and Farrell, for coming today. You've shared your comments with me, and particularly Ms. Farrell, we kind of have a nice dialogue going, and she has good suggestions, and I appreciate her comments. One of the things I've tried to do since I've been elected is be candid with my constituents and not tell them what I think they want to hear, but what I think the facts are is I know them. And I'll never forget, it was the year before this ordinance that came into effect was passed, I happened to be coming back to Omaha the evening of July 4, having had a party in Grand Island at one of my wife's family members, at her uncle's house. And as we came back, it happened to be in Millard, going by the Oak Hills Country Club, as we came around the bend to, and you could see the L Street exit, the sky was ablaze in fireworks and smoke. And I said to my wife, it's a city under siege. I mean, this is spectacular. I had, I had never seen anything like it, and that's before we had an ordinance. And so when the mayor said, you know, there was this thought about trying to get some sort of order and rules of the road, so to speak, for people engaging in these things, and so many of them who like them, that was, in fact, what we were thinking back then, that in terms of no rules, no regulations, when it meant that the fireworks were banned, there was widespread use. And I don't know if there was more enforcement then, but when you have a city of 450-plus thousand people, and we have 24 citations on 1,200 calls, I think that tells us something. The people who are calling, who are frustrated, have a right to be frustrated, that people still aren't following the rules. And if there's 1,200 calls, and there's no follow-up, and only 24 work their way into the system, and only 11 last year, that tells me the police do, in fact, have their hands full handling what are ranked by 911 and dispatch as much higher priorities. That doesn't mean that the people who are affected negatively by fireworks and their animals don't have a legitimate concern and complaint, and an expectation that it'll be followed up on. It's like the one retired police officer said, who lives, I think, in the 7,600 block of Walnut, who testified and said, these are priority fours. who testified and said, these are priority fours. I don't know if there's still priority fours, if there's a priority five, if there's anything below it. There's just four priorities. It's the lowest. So I think what's gonna happen here is the best intentions of the mayor to try to address a concern may in fact lead to expectations by those who really are bothered by fireworks, that there's going to be any meaningful difference in their lives next year. So one of the things that I was thinking about is the people who came to me and said, well, what about just banning them again? And then if they're not sold, then we'll know, obviously, it's just an enforcement issue. That it's not a supply issue, it's not a possession and temptation issue, it's not an availability issue. Just, just do that route. And another person said, excuse me, how about every other year? We do even number of years, and, and everyone gets a break who doesn't like them every other year. And, you know, I've heard so many different ideas on how to handle this. And as we work through it in the committee, rest assured that everyone who testified here today, your emails, your phone calls, the people who have stopped me in Hy-Vee aisles, to talk about what their ideas are, either way, I hear them all. And we'll be factoring them in, and I'll, I don't know that what we come up with will be the right solution, or that it'll, it'll provide meaningful relief to those who have concerns, but we'll sure try to come up with something, and, and the proof will be next year. But I agree, when we did, it was 100,000 a year, I think, and we did TV ads in the past, the consensus was, we were not getting value out of that. I do know the city convention and Visitors Bureau contracts with very competent professional advertising firms, and maybe it's possible, if there were, to be the will to invest in that sort of thing. Again, we could run PSAs during whatever period is determined to be the period for sale and discharge going forward. And, you know, we had different ideas of, of despite Mr. Bellino's concern, of raising the actual permit fee, to help fund overtime costs of police in the various precincts, that would then provide greater availability for police to respond. So that was another idea that wasn't really talked about here today. But it's something we're thinking about. And then to the mayor's point, and police chief's point, and the others that testified about, if you limit the access in terms of sales, well, maybe we oughta think about going back to thirty-five again. Maybe with fifty, and the proliferation of sales everywhere, maybe there's so much availability that people just think, like a few people said, you can blow these things off whenever you want. That there are no rules on days, or hours, or times of day. So there's a number of ideas that have been shared with me, some of which I just mentioned that hadn't been mentioned here today, others that have. And serving on the committee with Mr. Pauls, I, I assure you, he's, he's been trying to come up with some way of creatively addressing this. And, and I look forward to the process, and, and maybe having the week off from a regular city council agenda meeting next week, because we have the evening budget agenda, public hearing. Maybe that'll give us the time to do it, maybe we need more time, I don't know. But I'd like to see us coalesce around something, and, as we move forward. So with that, public hearings closed, no further comments, or do you have one, Mr. Harding?
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'll just, I wanted to, one thing I didn't cover was enforcement. And it's been said a lot. I'm, I'm supportive, too, of, of maybe increasing fines, what that finally, what those finally look like. I'm open to discussion, but, you know, I, I, at risk, I should probably think about it more before I say it, but a lot of this comes down to personal responsibility. I mean, that's the bottom line. We have, we have speed limits. We're supposed to abide by those. Police can't be everywhere, every day, to enforce a speed limit. We have personal responsibilities where, we know what the rules are, we should abide by them. If we had a ten-day period where, where people were abiding by those, we might not even be here discussing that today. But they're not. So I think having that shortened period, and making sure that people have, take that personal responsibility they have being citizens of our great city, I think that's, that's where a lot of people should be looking as well, too. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else follow up? Okay.
Non-action items, items of the P32 that require public carry or city control consideration and immediately, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing to get a vote. Any questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.